I'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for January 23, 2020. Would the Clerk please call roll? Commissioner White.
Yeah.
Commissioner McPhail.
Here.
Chair Dukas.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
And Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our annual meeting to elect the Chair and Vice Chair and to set the schedule of meetings for the year 2020, I will hand the gavel over to...
Well, don't we have to have the election first?
I'll hand the gavel over to the Planning Director.
She's too eager to get the gavel.
He's got a script.
Madam Chair, I nominate Phil King for, I mean, Phil White for Chairman.
Second.
All right. Commissioners, do we have any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jim King for Vice Chair.
And I'll second that.
Well, you're just taking the Chair first.
Yes.
And then that Chair will be, will take over and get the gavel again. So just for Chair, the Chair role, are there any other nominations? So I'll close that process. Megan, can you call the roll?
I believe they have a voting cast.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Do we have everyone? There we go.
Wow.
Excuse me.
All right.
I did that wrong. There we go.
Wrong.
There we go.
It's unanimous.
Okay, Nora, your turn when he gets the gavel.
Hey, thank you. Well, thank you very much, fellow Commissioners. It's an honor to do this. And as I told Nora before the meeting started, these are, these are big shoes to fill because Nora's done such an amazing job since I've been on the Planning Commission. And I hope, hope in the future she could be next, seated next to me so that when there are any parliamentary questions, she can help me out with that.
I'm more than willing to move.
Okay, the, the next thing that needs to be done is, is to select the Vice Chairman. And so I would ask whether there are any nominations for Vice Chairman.
I'd like to nominate Jim King for Vice Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
You guys moved today. Nah, never.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, public comments.
Just a moment. We also have to set the hearings for, it's a, it's the third thing. I think it's on your sheet.
Set, set the schedule for hearings for the year 2020. Dave, do you want to advise us on that?
I think we've provided the, the calendar to do the Thursdays. Have only had those set up. And do you already have that in your packet? I believe you do. So you can just note that in as your calendar for 2020.
I'll move that Planning Commission hearings occur on Thursdays at 8:30 for 2020.
I would...
Second.
I would, I would make, I agree with that. I would make a comment. In the past, to try to have some continuity and scheduling allowing it, we tried to get the meetings the first and Thursday so we could schedule ourselves appropriately. If that, when that works out with the schedule, I'd like to see that continue. Obviously, yeah. We don't have control over that.
So we, we have a motion?
I'll second. Or I think Phil, Phil second.
Is there any discussion on that? Should we vote on the motion then? Okay, now, let's move to public comments. And this is the time set aside for comments by citizens and the public to come forward and appear to, to our commission for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in, out there who would like to come forward? Hearing none. The next item is the approval of the minutes from November the 14th.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion or any, any modifications to the minutes that anyone would like to make? And the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is item seven, case number PL 180094 regarding a property 950 Catherine Road, Santa Susanna Knowles. And the case planner is Christina Buero. Buero.
Buero.
Take it away.
Okay. Good morning, Chair White, Commissioners, Christina Buero, Planning Staff. Before I start my presentation today, I just want to advise you of who is in the room. We have the applicant, Daniel Carlin, who will be speaking after my presentation. And also, we have members of the Public Works Transportation Department here to answer any questions, as well as Code Compliance staff, who will answer any questions you have as well. So before you today is a request by the applicant, Mr. Daniel Carlin, to request a variance from the Non-Cosse Zoning Ordinance Development Standards, specifically with, with regards to a variance request for deviations from setbacks, parking, and the height and location of fences and gates, a fence and a gate on, on the property. So to orientate yourself with the site, as Commissioner White had explained, the project site is located at 950 Catherine Road in the Santa Susanna Knowles area. The lot size is 4,791 square feet. The single-family dwelling that exists on the property was constructed in 1930. This was before the adoption of the County Non-Cosse Zoning Ordinance in 1947. And the current setbacks that all properties with the zoning of RE, Rural Exclusive, 10,000 square feet, minimum lot size, must conform to the following setback standards, which is 20 feet from the front property line, side property line of five feet, and 15 feet from the rear. As I mentioned, the zoning designation is RE 10,000 square feet, and the general plan designation is existing community. So to understand where the project is and what the project site has on it, I just want to give you some photos of the site, and this is the existing setting for the property. So the picture on my left is of looking east on Catherine Road. The seven-foot fence is the reddish fence in the foreground. And the arrow on the picture is demarcating where the existing roof of the single-family dwelling is located. And the picture on the right is looking south, and this is a little further back, and it's still the, looking, looking south, and it is the intersection. And you can see the, the existing fence to the left in the picture. So parking on the site and the single-family dwelling, just another picture of where the applicant currently parks the vehicles. There is no room on the site for a garage, which is covered parking, which is required by the ordinance. So the applicant must park on, on basically the right-of-way and on, along and adjacent to Catherine Road. So this picture on the left is looking east from Catherine Road, and you can see two vehicles parked there in the existing oak tree that's on the project site. The picture on the, on the right is looking north, and just another viewpoint of where the current parking situation and the fence line is. Going onsite, you can see that the property does have a steep slope from Catherine Road going down approximately 10 feet. You can see that with the fence in the picture on the left, and the two retaining walls and the oak tree. And then our picture on the right is just looking south, and then it has a picture of the existing single-family dwelling and the retaining walls and the fence. So I know the site plan's a little hard to understand, so I color-coded it, color-coded it for you. So the proposed addition that the applicant would like to continue to build is, is identified in yellow. The blue is the two proposed onsite uncovered parking spaces. They would be located in front of the proposed addition. The brown is the driveway, the proposed driveway. The red is the gate and the existing fence. And the green outline is the canopy of the existing oak tree. So this slide just represents the driveway alignment and the proposed six-foot-high gate, along with color coding for you. Yes?
Can you go back to the very first slide?
The, this slide?
Next slide. The oak tree is on the left, on the, on the slide on the left, the oak tree is on the left side of that slide.
Yeah, my pointer's not working, but do you, where the car is located in the, in the picture on the left, the car, and right above that is the existing oak tree. So it is on, on the property, but it does, it is a rather, it is a rather large oak tree. It's a protected oak tree, and so it is large, and it overhangs a little bit in, on, over the fence. No worries. Okay. So before we can go any further, I just would like to reiterate that the, the Planning Division and the Public Works Transportation Division and the Public Works Agency did work a lot with the applicants to figure out the best way to accommodate the variance request, because the parcel is, is constrained with the oak tree and with the slope and with the existing dwelling on the property. We did try, work with the applicant to figure out a best way to accommodate and require the parking. There are many reiterations of where we could, where staff recommended the, the proposed parking to be located. And so before you today is what staff has recommended is the best option for the applicant. So as I mentioned before, the applicant, Mr. Carlin, would request a variance from the development standards, specifically with setbacks, fence heights and location, and also with the proposed gate and onsite parking. So the applicant is requesting reduction of the rear setback, which is required 15 feet, but there, he is requesting a setback of six feet, eight inches at the rear to accommodate the existing single-family dwelling and the addition. To allow two uncovered parking spaces to be located onsite, the zoning ordinance requires covered parking spaces to allow the seven-foot-high fence to remain in the required front yard setback adjacent to Catherine Road, and to allow a proposed six-foot gate to be within the required front and side setback. So this slide just represents the development standards of the Non-Cosse Zoning Ordinance with regards to parking and setbacks, and what the proposed variance is requesting. So in order to grant a request, in order to grant a variance request, the applicant must meet certain variance standards. These standards are in the general plan, as well as the Non-Cosse Zoning Ordinance. And just generally speaking, there are five requirements that the applicant must meet. The first one is that there are special circumstances that do not apply generally to comparable properties, that grants of variance will not confer a special privilege on the property, that if there was strict application of the zoning ordinance, that will result in practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships for the property owner. And it would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and it will be consistent with the county's Hazard Management Plan. So just to give you more of a background of the Knowles area, and specifically the project site, lots in the Knowles range from .05 acres to .30 acres in size. The project site is again 4,791 square feet, or .11 acres. The majority of the lots in this area are rectangular in shape and do conform to the traditional subdivision configuration, and they're on a flat grade. However, the project site, as mentioned, is on the slope, starting from Catherine Road to the, down to the project site. And if the fence along, adjacent to Catherine Road was not there, it would expose the residents and the tree to the, the elements, as well as motorists and vehicles passing by on Catherine Road. So for the variance finding for specific characteristics, the current, the current configuration of the parcel is constrained, and the additional structures that are, that would, that are proposed would not comply with the setback requirements, as said before, because of the slope of the property, because of the existing oak tree that is on the site, and because of where the single-family dwelling is located, and just the general overall size and configuration of the parcel. For characteristics again, and zoning applicability, the reduced setback would result, this plan is the least physical impact to the property. The oak tree will not be impacted by the project, because there's not going to be any covered parking under the oak tree. The addition that is flush with the single-family dwelling at the rear of the property, and that is shown in the picture on my left. The blue tarp that you can see there is, is the addition. The existing fence, again, would provide security to the applicant and provide, and create a barrier from motorists and vehicles traveling along Catherine Road. And again, as I mentioned, Public Works Department, we, staff worked with Public Works Department and Transportation to evaluate the project and figure out the best option for the applicant. And Public Works Department did confirm that the existing fence would not contribute to any safety issues on Catherine Road.
Excuse me. Catherine, Christina?
Yes.
Well, that, that last slide.
Mm-hmm.
Those pictures are of the side yard, obviously, the slide on the left. How about the right one?
The picture on the left...
Is that side yard also the fence?
It's the rear yard. The picture on the left is the rear yard.
Okay.
And the picture on the right is the fence adjacent to Catherine Road, so it's the front.
Okay. And what's the height of the fence alongside, adjacent to Catherine Road? What's the height?
The fence along, adjacent to Catherine Road is the front of the property, and that fence is seven feet in height.
So that, that property line fence and the property line, or where the fence is across the front of the property, is seven feet all the way around? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the proposed gate would be six feet in height.
I'm sorry?
The proposed gate where the driveway would be located is six feet in height.
Right, thank you.
Catherine, I have a question. Over here.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. With the fence all the way around, where does the runoff go when it rains with that slope?
Would you like Mr. Carlin to come up and answer that question for you? Or would you like to wait until he addresses it?
I'll wait. I'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you.
So in terms of health and safety, the proposed parking would be uncovered and would be on the project site. It would not be on the road. The picture on the, on my left is the approximate location of the uncovered parking. It would be located in front of the proposed addition. Again, Public Works Department did review the, the proposed location of the parking and did confirm that there would not be any issues with ingress and egress to the site with the proposed parking.
Catherine, I was a little confused when I, when I read the report. The right-of-way, does it go all the way to the fence, or just partway to the fence from the paved road?
The right-of-way is the, are you asking where the exact right-of-way is intruding onto the property?
It is.
Okay.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Well, a portion of it is.
Yeah.
A portion of the right-of-way is.
Yeah, that's what I thought I read, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
And so going back to health and safety, the fence would, again, protect motorists and pedestrians along Catherine Road. So the sequel determination, the public, the Pawnee Division staff did review the project and determine that it would be exempt from sequel review pursuant to Section 15303 of the Sequel Guidelines, which is the construction or conversion of small structures. Specifically, this Class III exemption does state that there would, limited construction is allowed and exempt from sequel review. And it does specifically say examples of single-family dwellings, gates, fences, and garages. So the proposed addition, the proposed addition, the uncovered parking area, and the existing fence and the gate would not have a significant impact on the environment. So the next two slides are the recommended actions. I will not read them, but I would, would like to reiterate that your commission does have the option of approving staff recommendations, denying the project, or modifying, approving the project with modifications to the conditions. So that concludes my presentation. Again, we have staff from Public Works, Code Compliance, and the applicant here.
Okay, thank you. The official procedure for these public hearings are that at this time, we will ask for disclosures from the Commissioners prior to questions of staff by the commissions. I know that we vary from that. We've already had some questions, and I guess that's probably okay. But I'm, I'm reading down the list, so I would ask, from my right to the left, anybody has any disclosures?
I have no disclosures.
None.
I have no disclosures.
No disclosures.
I'm familiar with the area. Many, 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 many years ago, I used to work in that area. I've visited since then. A number of years ago, when we did the Simi Valley landfill project, I have visited the area several times in relation to things that were going on there. And more recently, after, after seeing the reports and the drawings, and knowing the area and the difficulty of it, I opted to take, take a drive out there just to refresh my memory. And so I did that. And I parked across the street and observed the entire scene. And that was after I Googled it on, on Google Earth and got a 360, according to the pictures of what this area looked like. I was a bit confused from the drawings in our package, and today's pictures are a little bit more clear. And I printed a, an aerial of the property. It's, and actually, there was a car parked, as I recall, in front. The area was, the address is easy to identify, nice big numbers on the fence, clear numbers, with, I don't know if the property owner's here today?
Yes.
Yeah, with a couple of Christmas wreaths on either side of it, kind of set it off, you see right away. Anyway, that's my disclosure.
Okay, and I, this is a little bit out of order, but I'm supposed to read the following statement. At this time, I would like to ask each Planning Commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. So let's go again. Does anybody have anything to add to their previous disclosures?
I have no disclosures.
None.
None for me?
None for me either.
I've already made my disclosure. However, I did reference a picture. I have it here. If the, if the commission liked to see it and enter it into the record, that's fine. It's your pleasure. Yeah, what do you think?
Yeah, you should enter it.
Okay.
Okay, so according to the procedure, the, the next item would be questions of staff by commission. I know we've already had some. Are there any additional questions of staff?
Earl.
Seven.
Not, not a question, but Christina, I owe you an apology. I kept calling you Catherine, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, so did I. I'm sorry.
Commissioner King.
Thank you. And let me start out by saying, as is my habit, I called staff, who authored the staff report, to go over any questions I had. And as always, Catherine was very helpful and very forthcoming, and just one more example of the great staff we have. Moving along.
Christina, too.
Christina.
Well, see what you did.
Catherine, Christina.
I think it's the address confusing.
Okay. One of the questions that, and I asked this of staff, and she wasn't really sure, was how did Public Works Traffic Division issue an encroachment permit to the prior owner without advising that owner that a variance was required?
Commissioner King. So in the project file, there is a letter from the Public Works Transportation Department dated May 27, 2015. The letter was to the previous property owner that states that the Public Works Transportation Department has done, had done a, a sweep, I guess is the word, to, of all the unauthorized encroachments in the Santa Susanna Knowles area. And the applicant, well, the, the previous property owner had that unauthorized encroachment. So the letter states that the, in part, that the, the property owner was to receive an encroachment permit from the Public Works Transportation Division, but also that they needed to correct any zoning violations and get permits if required by planning if modifications to the unauthorized encroachment, which is the seven-foot-high fence, are made. And I also like to add that the encroachment permits from, that are issued by the Transportation Department are issued to the property owner on title, so they don't run with the land.
Okay, however, the fact that it said if necessary in terms of the, of the variance, boy, that's a, that's a hole in the fence a mile wide. If I'm the property owner, I would probably want to, you know, interpret that as, well, they'll tell me if it's necessary. But just, I raise it because I'm always concerned when it appears that communication broke down with an applicant in one office of the county, not communicating clearly with the other office. I don't know if I'm going to fix it, but I'm always going to highlight that when I see it. see it. Next question, and Christina wasn't able to give me a definitive answer, and that is, what prompted the May 22 notice of violation in the first place?
So a notice of violation was issued on May 22. As I mentioned on the phone to Commissioner King, complaints that are submitted are, well, the county is a complaint-based county, so the public, so the county does not go out and actively look for violations. So the complainant is, cannot be divulged right now. But it was a complaint that was submitted by someone in the neighborhood, and it was for unauthorized construction close to the property line.
Okay.
So this, and you also asked about the stop, when the construction stopped, the stop work order was issued the day the violation was issued.
Okay, well, thank you. That clears up that question for me, which drives, I guess, my biggest concern in this whole case. And that is that in finding, too, that we're not conveying any special privilege on the applicant, we used as a justification here that, yes, there are other properties in the vicinity that have fences that violate our zoning ordinance, but the rationale is that since we've not received any complaints about them, then this wouldn't confer any special privilege on the existing property owner. And my concern is that, you know, this is the old two wrongs don't make a right, but it's four wrongs don't make a right. I understand the county's practice of waiting until we get a complaint, but we're putting on the record that we're approving a zoning variance in part because other folks are in violation, but nobody's complained, so, you know, it's going to be okay. Now, I personally believe that the case is strong enough without that reference to hold up to my, for my decision on granting the variance, but it always concerns me when we play fast and loose with the code. If we're going to pass ordinances that wait until we get a complaint, we probably ought to scrutinize those ordinances first to make sure we have the capacity to enforce the ordinance. But that's my editorial comment here. And finally, my concern is with the condition of the oak tree going in. The pictures help to show me about what the condition of the oak tree is. It wasn't clear in the conditions that the oak tree, what an arborist would say the oak tree's condition is. And it appears from the conditions, that's not going to happen until just before we restart construction. And that's important in my mind because at yearly intervals after construction is completed, that same arborist or un-arborist is going to have to go and evaluate the condition of the tree and whether it's deteriorated over time. This is particularly important because we are encroaching in the drip line, which means that we're also putting pressure on the root system at its edges, and that could cause an oak tree's condition to deteriorate. So I'm not sure how you would condition that an arborist complete that report, you know, sooner in the process. I just don't know if it can be done, but I wanted to comment on that. And that's all my questions.
Are there any other questions of staff by commissioners?
Well, just piggybacking on that, is that a condition that we could add? Is that something that the county could say, we want to know how that oak tree is doing? It seems to be outside of the drip line.
Commissioner King, Commissioner Dukas, the project has two conditions associated with it. They are standard conditions, and they are conditions that are added to when a project has a discretionary tree permit, which is, now, it's a discretionary permit, but it's not associated with this project.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jennifer Welch. I'm Christina's manager. And I just wanted to emphasize, Commissioner King, that condition number 13 requires a certified arborist to prepare the tree protection plan. So that is covered, so we're insured that a certified arborist will be monitoring the health and stature of this tree.
So preparing that monitoring plan will happen before we can?
Before zoning clearance will be issued. So they'll have to submit all of the documentation upfront before we'll allow him to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one more question. Everyone was noticed, all neighbors were noticed of today's hearing?
Commissioner, yes, they were.
And to date, we still don't have any communication from anyone who has concerns about this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of commissioners, of staff?
I have a comment.
Okay, Richard.
My comments took pretty much mirror Commissioner King's comments. The concern about the precedent-setting issue on the fence variance, since the county ordinance does speak specifically to the height of fences, six feet, certainly six feet side yard is standard. In this particular case, it exceeds that, not only in the front, but all the way around. And I appreciate the geographics of the location, but I'm concerned about that. I also understand the comments that Commissioner King is making about how this process has proceeded in the past, and I've got some questions, and I think if somebody's here for transportation, I would ask that, but, and I might ask some questions of the owner since he's, the property owner's here. That's all.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, then we will formally open the public hearing, and the next item is the presentation of the applicant. Do we have a representative of the applicant here? I have a speaker card, Daniel Carlin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Daniel.
Hi, commissioners. My name is Daniel Carlin. I am the owner of 950 Catherine Road in the Knowles. I'll just give a little background of myself on how I came to starting the build without a permit initially. Originally from Philadelphia, from Pennsylvania. I enlisted into the Marine Corps and was based in Miramar, San Diego. And that's how I came out to the West Coast. And then I'm currently LAPD, so that's why I moved up this way to LA, now in the reserves with the Marine Corps. I was advised by some neighbors, without checking myself first, that I could do an after-the-fact permit, which is the way it is on the East Coast. You can build and then go with your permit. So I thought I could go ahead and start building. Obviously, a neighbor called on me immediately when Keith from Building and Safety came out. I ceased any operations I have not built since that day. And I'd been working with Christina on getting the variance application that I need to proceed with the building. So currently, my fiancee and I have been talking about trying to have a family, so that was one of the beginning things of me wanting to add the addition to the property, was so we could expand our family and have the ability to do so. As everyone knows out here, the housing market is fairly expensive, and it's a lot harder for us to just sell our house and move somewhere else bigger to go and hat, and to be able to have a family, whereas we could afford to build on to our current property. So I wanted to follow the guidelines of, let me see if I can do this, I don't know if I can do this right, of the property, just the last picture that you had up. Yep, perfect. So as you can see, where the yellow is where the current addition is, where I'm starting, where I started the build, follows the current line of the house. And that was the only spot on my property that I was able to build due to the oak tree and due to the slope. And after discussing with Christina and the other planners, this was, and Transportation, this was the only spot that could actually build the addition. As for the driveway, or as, sorry, to refer to the addition, go, sir.
Excuse me, do we have a marker for the speaker? Could help us? Yeah, correct, a pointer, I mean, I'm sorry. That the speaker can use to identify what he's talking about.
No.
See this one work here?
Okay.
So it's just that in here.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay. So this yellow area right here is the addition that I'm proposing. Sorry, the mouse is jumping around on me. And I'm not within the drip line of the oak tree. So the addition should not affect any condition of the oak tree, according to, I spoke with an arborist on the phone, and they have not come out to the property yet, but they advised that because I'm not within the drip line, there should be no issues with the actual structure itself. Then I, the driveway was the next issue, was building a parking area on the property. Initially, I was under the impression that my current parking conditions were appropriate for the property and were okay, because I could fit three vehicles on there. But after Transportation came out to the property and advised me that part of that parking area is within the right-of-way, I had to find alternate parking area. They came up with some ideas on how we could do that, and one of the ideas that we had come up together with was building the driveway down from the street into my property and parking in front of the proposed building area. The current driveway would be the only portion that goes under the drip line of the oak tree. According to the arborist that I spoke with on the phone, I'm sorry, I do not remember her name off the top of my head, but she's probably going to be the one I use to come out to the property, advised because it's a driveway and it's not an actual building, we will not be sinking any footers down to the ground. It should not affect the life of the tree. And then I would like to talk about the fence a little bit as well. That is a pretty sharp curve, as you know, from the area. Having that higher fence right there really does protect motorists from seeing that it is a curve, because if that fence line was not there, that's an eight-foot drop-off into my property. So having that fence there does help them see where the curve is. Also, being a police officer, it has been known in the past that people have followed other officers home. I like to have that extra privacy at my house, that people can't be looking directly into my property. It's an extra security that I like to have. I know that's a personal thing, but not necessarily a safety thing, but with my work, I believe it is safety-related. That's all I have to adjust with that. Luckily, I was able to be here today. I talked to Christina in the past. I had, was supposed to be deployed with the military, and now I actually fractured my hand at work, so I wasn't supposed to be here today, but I'm glad I am able to hear, to answer any questions that anybody has.
Are there any questions of commissioners?
Yeah, my question earlier was about the runoff. Where does it go with the seven-foot fence all the way around the property?
So there's actually a gap underneath my fence, and when it runs off to the rear corner of my fence, which is, let's see if I can get the pointer to work, right here in this corner, that's where everything slopes to in the property. This runoff, there's a gap underneath my fence, and it runs off to the street behind my house, which is this way. You're welcome, sir.
Any further questions of the applicant?
Do you have any sense from your neighbors whether or not they have objections to your plan?
Yes, actually, well, I have, no one that I've heard has objected to the plan. I actually had a neighbor that was supposed to come out today, and unfortunately, with her work constraint, she wasn't able to make the hearing. But she said she'd be more than happy to offer any letters or anything to the board that were needed in the future. But everyone I've talked to around me, we were all friendly. I don't know if it was a bypasser that called on us or had opposition to it, or just saw it and was just like, hey, I don't think he has a permit, I want to call. But as far as my neighbors, I don't see anybody that's opposed, or I haven't heard anybody that's opposed.
Okay. Oh, and thank you for your service.
Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Did you say you're in their reserves now?
Yes, sir.
Second Battalion, 23rd Marines?
No, I'm Miramar, San Diego.
Oh, okay.
So I'm with MWSS 473, so the Marine Wing Support Squadron down there.
Okay. Thank you for your service also. I do have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I missed it. How long have you owned the property?
I've owned it for about three and a half years now.
Okay. So none of this, none of these variance issues were disclosed to you at the time of closure on the property?
No, sir.
I've got a concern. You're a peace officer, apparently?
Yes, sir.
I'm a former peace officer. And the issue of public safety comes up. The ordinance says, the county ordinance says that height of fences, the front property line is three feet, side yard is six feet. I can appreciate the fact that you inherited or you bought the property with those variances on it. I don't know, to say, whether to say shame on you or shame on the realtor who didn't disclose it. The point is, you have it, and that is the case. In responding to a call, any calls in that area, particularly that area, as you're becoming very familiar, it's difficult to find addresses, and it's extremely difficult to see, in some cases, the residence itself you might be responding to. And so having the ability to see onto the property is very helpful. And that's why, in my mind, I have trouble with a seven-foot fence at street level on the frontage. The side yards, you know, it's a privacy issue, even though it's counter to the ordinance, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. But I still have a problem with the height of the fencing along the street frontage. You're going to put in a six-foot-high gate, and the presentation that's been provided, the information that's been provided indicates that there was some research done in there, and it was identified that two or three other residences in the general area have six-foot-high fences also with frontage, on the frontage. It appears that, from what I read, none of them are permitted or were permitted before they were built. And I can, I appreciate the conundrum, if you will, that Commissioner King has voiced earlier because of the fact I've voiced that same problem and complaint when we've had issues in front of us having to do with violations of the CUPs or the building permits, where the county has gone out, various departments have gone out and done the various sign-offs, including location of the slab and making sure it's proper. And then in the case, and maybe Commissioner Dukas will remember this, we go to the final sign-off, and the property gets rejected because it's too close, it encroaches on the, I believe, the road frontage. And at the end of the day, we approved the variance, but it was a situation where the right hand didn't seem to know what the left hand was doing in this county, and there's no excuse for that. And so I appreciate your concern about that. I think, I've been, I sense, and what I've observed since then, is that the cooperation and communication between the respective departments, be it Transportation, Public Works, and the other agencies, is much better. But I do have a problem with the height of that fence on the frontage. You know, as a peace officer, you want to see everything you can see before you breach that property line. And seven-foot-high fence coming in, in that area with no lighting, is really difficult for me to accept. I would certainly like to see that height on the frontage reduced down to the level of the fence for public safety purposes. I don't think that would impact the safety of residents from traffic. It would certainly continue to provide the safety from pedestrians and bicyclists that might go by. It would not set a precedent, well, as it is, by approving it, Commissioner King's concerns, I think, are valid. That would be my concern also, that we set a precedent for somebody else to point at to show that the fence was approved for six feet when the ordinance is three. This is a unique property. And so that's part of what I'm considering and kind of debating with.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the fact you've done everything you can since, you know, since you became aware of the problem to address this issue, and I commend you for that. But that's kind of what I'm struggling with here.
Commissioner King?
Thank you, Chair White.
Thank you, Chair White. And I find Commissioner Rodriguez's questions and comments very appropriate here. My simple question to you is, would it be reasonable to take a foot off the top of that wood fence by way of a chainsaw if necessary? And would that create any undue hardship?
To make it six feet?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking? No, no problem at all. I'd have no issues making the foot... The fence six-foot.
So if we change the variance on the fence to six feet, which would match the height of the gate, you'd be okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Just a point of clarification. Where is the front of the house?
The front of the house? So this is the street and this is considered the front of the house?
Where is your front door?
Front door faces the north, which is that way. It's right here is where my front door is.
Okay.
Per the county, this is considered my front of my house.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was wondering if it was the side?
See, that's what I was asking initially. So when I first was going through this whole thing, they had told me it was the way my door faces. And I was like, okay, it faces north. So I would have been within my variance for the building part of it. And then they came out and they changed it and said, no, it's actually where the street is.
Is that correct? Okay.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant? Yes?
I have a question either to county council or to staff. When we approve a variance, is a precedent set for, say, other fence heights in the neighborhood?
That's a good question and it comes up a lot. It's not a legal precedent. When I hear precedent as a lawyer, I think, oh, there's a published court decision which is making new law and so then we have to follow that. You know, every variance case is unique. But that being said, if, as a practical matter, planning allows it for one property owner, then another property owner could cite, you know, that allowance and say, hey, it's not fair to not give that to me also. So it's not a legal precedent, but it's... I would call it a potential practical precedent.
Okay. Well, in Thousand Oaks, the city came up with a solution to people who live on roads, you know, close to roads that create a lot of noise for them and allowed an extra foot for quiet. And a lot of people raised their fence a foot on all the, you know, people who live right up next to a road such as Catherine. And so I wasn't offended by the extra foot. And I understand your personal, you know, feeling of safety and starting a family and everything, but, you know, you might move. So we just look at the land. We don't look at the compelling personal stories. We look at just the bricks and the sticks. But there are other homes in the area that have fences that are higher than... Oh, and is it possible to have higher than three feet on the frontage? Is there a mechanism for that in this area?
So fences along the street, street-side setbacks are three feet, right? However, the variance gives the property owner an opportunity to request a higher fence with the discretion of the planning commission.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong. Are there other property owners that have fences higher than three feet in... On their frontage road?
There are. And like Christina said, we're a complaint-based county and until that applicant comes in for a permit or a permit modification, or if there's a complaint that's formally filed, will we address those inconsistencies with the development standards associated with fences?
Okay. And one last question to you. Did you construct the fence?
I did not know. It was constructed before I moved in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions of the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate all your time reviewing my case.
Again, thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
Are there any members of the public who wish to appear in support or in opposition to this proposed action? Okay, hearing none. We will have closing comments by staff, if there are any?
None. Thank you.
Okay. And so we will now close the public hearing and begin deliberations among the commissioners who... You reached first, so I'm going to go to you, Commissioner King.
I'm in support of the variance per all of my comments with two changes. One is that we remove second-to-last paragraph on, I think it was page 17. It's the second-to-last paragraph in the second finding. Remove that paragraph that deals with the neighbors, you know, not having complaints.
Is this Exhibit 4 or is this in the staff report?
This is in the staff report.
Okay. Page 17?
Yes.
Is that your only comment?
And then...
Hold on. Let me catch up.
Okay.
Seventeen. You would like to remove which?
The second-to-last paragraph. The second-to-last paragraph in the second finding, as it turns out.
Commissioner King, may I interject real quick?
Sure.
So one of the obligations that the applicant provides to staff is his reasoning for the variance and we provide that in the staff report. So this paragraph on the bottom of page 16 is actually Mr. Carlin's response to the finding.
Well, actually, it's the part of the staff report that's responding to...
Oh, my bad. Sorry about that.
That's why I selected that paragraph.
Duly noted. We will omit that.
And then finally, they changed the variance on the fence to six feet rather than seven feet. So those are the two changes I'm asking for.
Okay. Commissioner McPhail?
I don't disagree with what Richard and Jim talked about because years ago, when I worked around here, the left hand never knew what the right hand was doing. And so I can appreciate those comments. But on the other hand, there's other fences that we already know of because we've been told that are not in compliance. Plus, this gentleman bought the house in good faith that the fence was okay. And number two, like somebody said, it was either the realtor or the escrow company that put the screws to him. So I have a problem with even asking him to cut a foot off of that fence because if we're going to do it to him, and regardless of the county's policy of enforcement by complaint, they need to go out there and give a notice of violation to every fence that fronts Catherine Road and any other road up there that's over three feet tall. And so I can't, in good conscience, penalize Mr. Carlin for acts of other people that he had no control over. And I know I may be in the minority here, but I'm in favor of approving it just the way it is right now without having him cut down a foot from a fence. Now, that may sound easy, but if you ever tried to cut a fence down, you would know that that's not a very easy project because a lot depends on where the two-by-fours are and the four-by-fours are, how far below the top of the fence they are. So in reality, there's a real possibility that his whole fence would have to be rebuilt. Hopefully not. But there is a possibility of that because of where the screws or the nails go into the two-by-fours to hold the boards up. So I'm not in favor of changing the staff report at all. But I would recommend that if there's other fences, even though there hasn't been any complaints, if we're going to make Mr. Carlin drop a foot, then the county needs to go out there and make everybody else drop a foot. I'm sorry, but, you know, I was a regulatory person for 40 years and we just didn't act on complaints. We were out there and doing inspections. So if they don't have the manpower to do that... Plus, this house was built originally in 1930 or the lot was configured in 1930. Come on. You can't keep holding people going back to or be required to do something unless they're going to improve the property or whatever and have them go back to what was appropriate in 1930 or even 2005 or whenever it was. I just have a problem with that.
Can I respond?
Commissioner King?
Sure. And comments are well taken. However, I want to point out, first of all, that the other fences in violation are six feet high. We're only asking him to lower it to six feet. Secondly...
No, they're out of complaint by three feet because the ordinance is three feet.
Let me finish. In terms of the variance that we're granting, we would only take it down to six feet. So if the other property owners got a complaint, at least we wouldn't be bickering over that foot. Secondly, I asked the property owner, would it be a problem? And he said, no. So, you know, I would expect him to know, you know, whether that's really going to be a big issue. I suspect it's not going to be a huge cause.
I understand that, Jim, and that's what he said. But on the other hand, we're still asking somebody to do something that was totally out of his realm of responsibility. That's my problem. The county, Public Works, all the staff reports say that they don't have a problem with it. Now, I agree with you. There's a problem out there and it needs to be corrected. But if nobody else complains about a six-foot fence in an area that only supposed to be three-foot fences on the right-of-way frontage, why should we punish this gentleman and be the only one? That's my point. Now, I'm not saying I'm going to vote against your motion. Don't get me wrong. But I just have a problem with the county saying, okay, everything's hunky-dory. We'll give him a variance and he can go on his merry way. Okay? But if that's the case, then why should he be punished when we know that there's violations all over that area? But nobody's complained. That's my point.
No, I understand your... Commissioner McPhail. And I wouldn't have even approached the six feet versus seven feet except for my colleague to my left, a law enforcement officer, raised the issue of the police being able to see into the yard. And apparently, it makes a difference whether the fence is six feet high and they can peek up over it or whether it's seven feet high and they can't. So it's a safety issue that caused me to think about that as a compromise. Okay.
Any further comments?
Did we miss asking Public Works regarding traffic? Was there a question that was going to be directed to Public Works?
I commented, I asked whether somebody from Transportation was going to be here. I think I'm satisfied with the fact that one, part of the property encroaches on the public right-of-way. It's 40-foot wide and it's basically 20 feet either side of center line. Would you step up, please? Transportation?
Without objection, I'm going to open up the public hearing again. Okay. Please come forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Darren Ayetta with the Transportation Public Works Department.
Yeah, the report... Thank you. The report indicates that the road right-of-way is basically 40 feet and basically 20 feet either way of center line. Is that my correct interpretation?
That is the correct interpretation of the existing right-of-way.
And the property fence encroaches on that right-of-way?
That is correct.
And that's the need for the encroachment permit or the variance on the encroachment?
That is correct. It would be a J-3 permit, which is basically an encroachment permit that, you know, is accepted that the property owner, if the road were to be widened, it's at the expense of the property owner to remove the encroachment.
Do you know if anybody from your department has gone out to the site to inspect the situation out there? Or is it done all ministerially?
I wouldn't know if it's done ministerially, but yes, someone had gone to our site. One of the permit inspectors went to the site and met with Mr. Carlin.
Okay, fine. And so you're good with the location of the fence doesn't cause any sort of traffic safety issue for you as a department?
The fence does not cause the traffic safety, no.
And you didn't consider the height of the fence in making that determination, did you?
We do not. We would consider if there was the strength of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Any further questions of staff or planning staff?
I don't have any questions of staff.
Okay.
This helps the public hearing again. Thank you very much.
Thank you much for your time.
Back to deliberations.
Back to deliberations and/or motions?
Are we deliberating a motion? Did I miss the motion?
We can deliberate or we can make motions either one. It's up to you.
My feeling is that the person who is the... Not the representative, but the person whose district it is would have best insight into what would fit community character and, you know, everything having to do with that special area. And so I know Santa Susana Knowles because of times that we've gone out there and visited with very, you know, specific projects in mind. But in terms of knowing what the community character is, I would tend to defer to the person who, you know, knows the area best.
Anyone else care to speak?
Yeah. I want to reflect on Commissioner McPhail's comments. I basically agree with everything you said, Phil. The conundrum, the contradiction of approvals between the various parts of this county government here as it relates to permits, et cetera, and inspections. And I appreciate your frustration with what we have here. I've experienced that same frustration and voiced it. And my belief and my thought was that, well, now that we... And the county's policy, I've learned, is we're reactive, not proactive. We should be proactive. And I appreciate the fact that the ag, County Ag Department is proactive and to address these issues before, or identify the issue before they become problems and make sure there's compliance. It's obviously a staffing issue as it relates to the county and so we're reactive. But I've raised the same issue. Well, now that we know we have a problem, other problems similar, shouldn't we move toward that and make, at least give notice to those property owners that there's a ordinance issue? I personally experienced that, living in a beach county community a number of years ago. I rebuilt my place 25 years ago. We've been there for 40 years. And one of the things we did was, in construction, was trying to expand the house to get more footprint. And we found out in the permit process that we have a setback requirement. We couldn't go beyond the footprint. And so we worked with that. But... And we knew that there was a three-foot height limit on the fencing on the frontage because of the obvious, the safety issues. We knew about the easement. We knew about all of that. We found out about right-of-way and center point of the roadway. We found out about right-of-way and center point of the, of the roadway. And in my particular area, the majority of fencing that fronts properties would be nonexistent if it had to comply with that right-of-way. The fences are all somewhere within the right-of-way. And so the fact is, it's at least partially on the county right-of-way in this location. I can understand that, I don't have a problem with that. But unless there's a change in the policy of the county to become more proactive, when we find these violations incidental to other processes in front of us, I don't know how we can proceed. I'm, I, I still feel that, that the frontage portion of the fence ought to be reduced to six feet compliant, consistent with the gate that's going to go in. The applicant has indicated that he's not opposed to doing that. I realize there's a cost involved. Given his occupation, he, I think he can appreciate the comments I made as it relates to safety. And it is not a lit area, it's dark out there, very dark. Unless you know where you're going, you have difficulty finding the place. I've been, from past experience, having to stop at a fire station nearby to get specific directions on how to find a residence. I'm well aware of the area. But I would support Commissioner King's motion as it relates to the height of the fence and changing the staff recommendation to that. And all the way, I appreciate Commissioner McPhail's comments. I would not support a motion to change and leave the fence as it presently exists on the staff report. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner King does not have a motion on the floor, but someone could put a motion on the floor if, if they would like to.
Would you indulge me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Like to make a motion that we adopt staff recommendations on case PL-18-0094 with two changes. The first change is that we remove from page sixteen, yes, I corrected it, from page sixteen, the second to the last paragraph that relates to finding two, and that we change the variance on the fence to six feet.
Is there a second for that motion?
I would second that. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Again, I'm, I'm thinking of Commissioner McPhail's comments. I mean, in, the fence is a wooden fence, it's slat wooden fence, as I understand and recall. I mean, I really don't, wouldn't care if, if the post stayed in place and the slats were cut down to six feet to allow that observation and clearance. I mean, the post would stick up another foot, and if that's, if that's okay with, with the property owner, it minimizes the cost and avoids the cost as opposed to possibly having to replace a major part of the fence to do that. Anyway, that's, those are my comments.
I'd, I'd accept that friendly amendment if it changes anything.
Would you like to restate your motion to include it, or?
Yeah, make my life hard, go ahead. Okay, let me restate it. I'm going to move that second to last paragraph on page sixteen related to finding number two to be deleted. And the variance for the fence be changed to six feet except for the vertical posts.
Which may, which may stay at seven feet.
Yeah.
And does the secondor of the motion agree to this motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion?
And he's not getting into a situation, if you break it, you have to fix it. Will he have to do anything further with regard to the fence and it being in the right-of-way?
Other than get an encroachment permit?
So he needs another, he needs another permit regardless?
That's correct.
Yeah?
I, I question why, because the fence isn't being moved.
Okay, and so, so we're good on that? Okay, that's our understanding, is that he doesn't...
That's my understanding.
So the, sorry to interject, the encroachment permit is per the property owner?
Okay.
So because there was a transfer of property, Mr. Carlin will have to get an encroachment permit issued to him.
Regardless.
Regardless, okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say, that's what I read in the, in the staff report.
Okay.
It doesn't...
Oh, Mr. Show Off, I read the staff report.
Well, I know you did too.
I probably missed it.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No.
If not, let's vote.
Chair White, Chair White, if I, if I can interject for your direction on the motion on number two.
Okay.
It's the fence height variance changed to six feet. I'd also like to encourage, we'll need to address findings related to that direction because that's not what the applicant requested. So if you want to add to your motion that we would change it to six feet five, and any changes in the findings to support that direction.
Can I amend my...
Sure. Or restate it?
Yes, okay. My motion is to approve the staff recommendations with, with the following amendments to eliminate from page sixteen the second to last paragraph relating to findings to reduce the variance for the fence to six feet on slats, but the post may remain at seven feet, and all related findings.
Does the secondor of the motion agree to that?
Yes, I'll support that.
Any further discussion on the motion? Let's vote.
Yes.
The motion is approved. So that closes item number seven. Thank you, everyone who came to appear on that. We will continue with the agenda. Item eight is discussion, the first item being a report by the planning director on board actions and other matters. So, Dave, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Chair White and Commissioners. Looking ahead for the Board of Supervisors, since we last met, did take action for the mobile home overlay project that included the zone overlays for mobile home parks and senior overlay zone. And they approved that zoning changes. So our staff has already been implementing that direction. We have also released the general plan EIR. So that was released on January thirteenth with a close for public comment on February twenty-seventh at five o'clock. And we are working away now and preparing for the next step after that will be response to comments during the months of March and April, and then getting an agenda for your commission's review and recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. As far as your upcoming planning commission hearings, we have nothing set for February, but for the month of March, March nineteenth, we would have the Antera Project, which is oil and gas production as well, as well as wastewater, water infiltration project. And that will be on March nineteenth. We also have an item on March twenty-sixth, review of the ordinance changes to the subdivision ordinance that staff has been working on. We're doing some engagement in that project, so that's why it's set for the last meeting week in March, March twenty-sixth. And so that's what we have as far as projections. The only other thing I have to comment on is you have your brand-new agenda that actually showed some changes per your direction. So you'll see some header adjustments as well as highlighting upfront to the public how public comment and process occurs during the hearing. And hopefully that informs folks who are new to the, to a hearing here on how that goes forward. And that's all I have to report.
Regarding the public comment period on the EIR, is it inappropriate for the planning commissioners, individual planning commissioners, to have comments on the EIR?
That's a good question. I, I don't think it's inappropriate. You have, you have every right as a citizen to comment on the EIR. It gets, it's just important to clarify when you're submitting a comment, it's on, you know, your, your individual behalf. You're not speaking on behalf of the commission. But in some ways, I think it would, it would be helpful to get those comments into the planning division in advance of the planning commission hearing, so they don't come up at the last minute. So it's, it's not, it's, it's your right. And I would just, like I said, make clear that you're, you're commenting on your individual behalf and not on behalf of the, the planning commission as a whole.
Okay, the... I understand that planning staff is slammed, and I, I want to be helpful. I noticed that there are, like, in the table of contents, there were, like, error messages, and there were, you know, problems with punctuation and, you know, little, little things that, that I just seem to have an unusual gift for spotting. So, and, and there are some larger questions too. And I'm just wondering when it's appropriate for us to, to weigh in on those? And whether we should do it informally, or whether we should do it formally?
That's a good, that's a good clarification for your question. If, if they're formal substantive comments, that's where the best practice is to get them into the record so everyone has a chance to see, so it's a transparent process. If they're more grammatical type comments, and that might be more helpful just to reach out more formally to the planning division on those ones.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so to follow up on that, would that mean that if, if we had comments, and I bet we do, that we should bring them to the planning commission when planning commissioners have other things to bring up at the end of the, of our meeting? Is that the time to do it?
I, no, Chair White and Commissioners, it's really, the deadline is the February twenty-seventh. So you would want to put any of those comments, as Jeff Barnes indicates, your own personal perspective in writing. And that would be considered one of the letters, public comment letters, that we respond to in all our response to comments.
I have a question in the last November meeting in the minutes. As Planning Director Ward will follow up on security protocol for potential contentious hearings. Is that forthcoming?
Yes, actually, Agency Director Kim Pearlheart has had some communications with the sheriff and other folks in the CEO's office, so that's ongoing. And then we will bring you an update.
Okay. Anything further? Questions of Dave?
Yes, I have something I just realized. In the comments, the declaration I indicated, I Googled it and had a picture of the overhead. And you can agree that we should submit it part of the record as an exhibit, and you, we've all seen it now. It hasn't been marked yet, so somehow we need to get this officially on the record. How do we do that?
We'll open up the public hearing briefly to include this in the, in the record. There it is, and then we'll close it. Okay, any comments by commissioners to, to the audience here? If not, oh, you do have one?
Oh, just congratulations to the Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you very much.
Got that dig in, didn't you?
Okay, the meeting is...